Pledge of Allegiance. All right, roll call. Let the record reflect that all members present except for Mark Petron. Is Mark on Zoom call?
He's not.
All right. We're gonna do approval of agenda. I should.
Okay.
Somebody want to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
It was moved by Director Gerard and seconded by Director Lang to approve the agenda as it stands. Any discussion?
Are we gonna address the bus drivers as part of the COVID-19 situation?
My order, if you remember, this is not on the agenda, it wasn't put into the paper. We can't add things because this is a special meeting. It'll be on the agenda next Monday. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I'll abstain. Motion passes five zero zero. All right, moving on, discussion items, COVID-19 situation. John, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you very much. Hopefully people can hear me out there. I'm passing out what we have right now. Latest information we have. This is fresh this morning. People go on to the people can go on to the county site and take a look and see what's going on by that. They'll get some of this, but this is the freshest stuff that that we have. They wait to upgrade their dashboard in for a few days because they want to make sure all of them get accounted for. What happens is people are getting tested, let's say at Sartell, those don't usually get until later. So if they put it up, then people wonder what's going on. You can go into the dashboard. Are you hooked up for that? I can show the dashboard. But you're you're not using the extension, I'll I'll dig that on. I mean, I won't, there it is, good.
Might be helpful to share it on the meeting too, John.
I I don't know, do you have the dashboard? For the county dashboard? I'm gonna send it up.
Sure.
Okay, I'll send it to you and then you can put it on. And I'm thinking if you can plug in, that would be even better. Need an adapter, let me know. Send that dashboard to you via email, so you have it. We'll get that going. When Susan's calling it up for everybody to have. Send it to you, Susan, so you can put it on. Pre take a look at it right now. We have the whole county is at seventy-five point eight three. That's a fourteen day active case rate. So it doesn't count everybody that was there ahead of time. I'm gonna say this for everybody listening on. Originally, everything came out based on the county count. If this was a case, we'd be in distance learning right now. But what they've gone to is more of a local count and what's going on in your school? Because we're rural. Rural's a little different, yes, I do understand. People travel to Little Falls, people travel to Bolus and other places. You know, and come back here, that's the case always. But what's going on in school is very important. For example, you can see there that the Bolus rate is twenty-three. If I figured out their case route, there'd be a eight hundred and twenty-seven, twenty-three, three-eight for ten thousand individuals. Well, that's a little ridiculous. The problem in the world, because you have small populations, two people could put you out in some school districts. So they let us have a little more flexibility, which I really appreciate this thing doing. Bolus this last this morning, I believe. And Tony is on, if Tony needs to chirp in a little bit, that would be good. Anyway, this morning, we discovered two people out in Bolus. The family did everything perfectly. But that doesn't stop you. There was an outbreak on Wednesday night. Of course, we didn't have school on Thursday. They tested, it came back positive, tested siblings, it came back positive. And so they didn't know beforehand. Well, that meant that we had to take a group of people out today. Anybody that was in the class, anybody that rode the bus and that was close enough, that's close contact. Those are the things we've been doing. And so the whole board knows. There aren't any cases that have come from the school and went back to families. Everything has been families coming into the school. And again, I've got a compliment, I don't know how many times I can tell you that parents have tried to do the right things, but sometimes that just doesn't happen because the case comes in late and the child was already exposed and shows positive. So anyway, what we're looking at are our cases that are going on in the area. We're also looking, this evening, we had another family did a great job. They had a student that was distance learning, was asymptomatic, ended up testing positive. They found out about it today. They withheld their kids a long time ago. They tested positive. Well, fortunately, they were out long enough and the contact was less enough. There there's nobody that's dismissed, I don't believe from that, or if it is, it's minimal. So I want you to understand that what that was. Our incident response team met last week, Monday, and had a discussion. At the time, there wasn't any movement because I was waiting for more stats to come in on Thursday. They came in Thursday and my biggest fear was we're gonna see more exponential growth. In that time period, Royalton dropped down six. Not down, pardon me, on Thursday, the numbers were up. On Monday, they were back down. Today, I could not call in the whole group, but I notified everybody on the response team. Russ is part of that response team. And our numbers went up, but fortunately in Royalton, our numbers went down. They went down six individuals. And if you look at the sheet and hover over each area, now that, yeah. If you've got the right one, Royalton, what's the number saying?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. I believe that was nineteen this weekend, I could be wrong, you recall, Russ?
Sounds right.
Sounds right?
Yep.
Okay, so with that in mind, what we did was talked a little bit as other members and members here, including both principals, the bus, the head of the bus, the direct director, Galen, we talked with David. We talked with Don. And we kind of brought together the working pieces that we have to have. And at that time, we thought what would be a good alternative to that, because we do want to keep kids in school as much as we can. Hopefully, we can do that the rest of the year, is that we should move certain grades forward into high grade. At the same time, keeping lower grades, some of the lower grades here in person all the time. So what we came up with was a recommendation that's coming from that group and for me, is that we take four through twelve, because those kids are a little older, and put them on a high grade system. Then what we do is take the pre K through three. The kids that really need, not saying everybody doesn't, but the kids that are really at a bigger deficit in distance learning, and put them in person every single day. That will help out everybody. It cuts down our numbers an awful lot. With that said, on Wednesdays, that pre K through three would stay in person. So that's five days a week that would be going on. And we'd have to do some prep work to get there. Number one, we have to clean out the classrooms to make room for having a half the number of students there. We have to set up different areas, clean up different areas. That takes time and people and make some transition also to let parents get ready for this, so they can spend at home. So we've talked about times on that. The first proposals Thursday and Friday to do distance learning. And this would be a different kind of distance learning. This is not full distance learning, it would be. One of those days, pre K through three would be, but otherwise, they would be there the opposite day. And then they're going to, but it's to help everyone get everything perfect so we can move on. I hope I'm semi-clear with that, as I was trying to prepare everything at the same time. Questions?
Why third grade? Why not fifth grader?
Number one, scientifically, I mentioned to you one time, we've got this land called the thymus. That really protects the lower grades a lot more. And they become very asymptomatic. But the need at that level, the nurturing, the face-to-face is so important, plus by keeping those in a lot fewer, kids would have to stay out, if that makes sense. It takes care, we bring in half of anyway for childcare, we have to provide that for essential workers. But the concern is that lower level working on. I I hope we never have to go further, but we might have if the numbers in the county hit exponential growth, which means it doubles every few days.
John, is Little Falls going to hybrid learning then?
They have in some of their schools, they have not gone through yet. And we wouldn't do this instantly, like I said, it's so important. I think we have to prepare our students, our teachers and our parents for this to happen. With hybrid learning, what would happen is all our activities can still stay in place, which is also a very important part for our students. Go ahead.
On this, for when we initially talked and it could be a difference with the things changing. So we're not really going by just our positives in school anymore, as far as.
Yeah, we we do use our positives in school, but that's been, for example, last week, we were, I think we had like a hundred and fifty out. We had that grade.
Oh, but not positive.
Not positive. That was minimum on positive. I think that that came from two positive contacts. That's the other thing we're finding, everything goes back to a family, like I said. And so like the one this morning, that was family members, that's one family. But to be super safe, what do we do? Everybody's quarantined for a time period. On that, I don't think we've seen anybody come out from that, I know we haven't. It's been a different family member, an older family member that has been exposed. And then what we want to do is make sure that it doesn't come out of the school. And and again, I can't think the families enough for that.
So just so also not to have fourth and fifth coming, right? So ideally, it would be nice to have high school hybrid, elementary onsite. Is there? I mean, I I thought I was under understanding too, there was a challenge with busing a little bit as well, right?
Um, there is some of that.
Okay.
Constantly. For example, we lost a bus driver today. That could throw us in, like I said, that could throw us into a distance learning situation.
John, how did we lose a bus driver? That's not just.
Oh. On the other side of it, they are quarantined. That's how we lost the bus driver today. They, we lost two a couple of weeks ago, same thing, they were quarantined. They're pretty well protected, they got plexiglass and two seats back on both sides. Or on one side and right behind it, two seats back, no one sits there. So the biggest thing, and they're protected, when somebody comes in, they pass by, they go in the back. They rotate their standing seats and it's on the road. But they're on the bus for more than thirty minutes with somebody that tested positive, then they have to be quarantined to protect themselves and to protect everybody else. Did I answer that for you, Aaron?
Yep, yep, I just knew there were some challenges with busing as well. The hybrid gives us challenges, right? Where it starts to limiting capacity more and and it just, it makes it a challenge to try to keep all of the elementary here as well.
Yeah, with with that said, there's some adjustments we have to make. And we talked about that earlier for distance, how close you live to the school, what we have to do, depending what we decide to do tonight, when we execute. What we said we could do is move to that plan, that the state minimum, but we're we're less than that. We can handle some of it, but we're gonna have to force some of it, so we have enough room for what we have. You're right, if we go down another, we're very fortunate, first off. Our bus drivers have been wonderful. And and we're working to keep everything we can there. But they pitched in and helped in areas they haven't. They're doing the extra things they need to do, we're very appreciative of that. Even with that, you can't, somebody said to me, well, John, just put on some more buses, these bus drivers. And that's why if anyone can run a bus, we'd love you to go get your license and help us out that way. That's where we're short and it's a nationwide shortage. It's an area shortage, it's not like we can manufacture. Kelly, you had a question?
I did, when we, so say the bus drivers that were quarantined or anyone that we have out quarantined, how are we just doing so many days out, or how do they know that they can come back? Or do they have to get a, like a, like the kids, do they have to get a negative reading, or they just are out for that ten or fourteen days, or?
And I'm gonna put in my earphone and Tony, if you can unmute. Even if we're laying it through.
All right, so when we look at close contacts, an individual that's not a household member, close contact is fourteen days from last exposure date. So when we're navigating through, you know, we've had a slalom on Fridays, well, now it's Monday or or Sunday when we're navigating through, we go retroactively back to Friday from our last exposure dates and then begin counting our dates.
You are feeling well, right, Tony?
I'm looking to see if there's a.
The speed you're having is sounding like Gareth Mators, oh.
Hang on a second here.
Yeah, it sounds like you're.
Is that better now?
No.
Okay, sorry, my my Bluetooth earphones must not have been working very well. Okay, so I'll start again. Quarantine of a non-household member is fourteen days from the onset of symptoms or the last exposure date. So, you know, we we've had a rash of of some on on Fridays, but we don't get notified until Monday or perhaps Tuesday when that result comes in. And all the close contacts that we have, we personally call and get a hold of them so that they know when that return date is. And I I've even had some, especially for the elementary and the ECC where work needs a note, they they need something from the school indicating that they're out and we have to watch their children. And more than happy to email that out faster than than getting it through the mail so that people know when that return date is. It gets a little more tricky when you have kids in households where there's a positive. The Department of Health has told us that if you're in a household where isolation is absolutely non nonexistent, or it can't happen with bathroom situation or kitchen situation or whatever it is, your fourteen day quarantine doesn't start until that isolation period is over. So in actuality, it can mom or dad positive, or brother sister positive, they have to wait out that ten days plus an additional fourteen days.
Tony, let's say I'm a parent and and my spouse is tested positive, then around my child, which way gets them back faster, if I don't do anything, or if I have my child tested?
When, you're talking if a child is sick?
Yeah.
The fastest, the fastest way back is to get an alternate diagnosis, which is, could be a viral cold, it could be strep throat, it could be the flu. It, the fastest way is to get an alternate diagnosis, if you firmly believe that it's not, or get a test. The hard part is is trying to get in to get a test. You know, some clinics are requiring you to be seen, whether it's virtually or in person before they order a test. You know, yeah, you can go to Sartell Pediatrics and get the rapid test. But if you're not scheduled for another week, because they're a week, week and a half out for scheduling, it's not really rapid anymore. You know, the 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 least amount of time that that you can be out, you know, is is how quickly you can get in to get seen, to get an alternate diagnosis, or get in, get a test result. Some people have expressed, well, I'm just gonna wait up my ten days. And that's their choice, they can, but they're out those ten days, distance learning until until that's cleared.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Tony?
Yep.
Any, talking. I want you to explain to me, because I can't figure it out myself. If it's bad enough that we have to move to hybrid, how come we're gonna keep on with the sports? I just don't get it, and
So.
I I live, I live in my little bubble out in the country and I don't see anybody.
Yep.
That's where I am, but I don't understand knowing the way it works with circles and limiting people, so you're gonna keep these kids away from each other at school. And then after school, they're all gonna get together, so why don't we stay in school? I, this is the problem I have with it. So can you try to explain to me why? Why that would be?
The the ability for us to pod things together and and make sure that different groups are clear helps allow us to have non-positive people coming in, coming into I don't wanna say infect, but to to contaminate that pod where we have to shut them down. When we have had positive cases, we take a look at what what is, what different dynamics of our school are being affected, what activities and what sports? And to this point, the only people that have been affected is is people in close contacts within classrooms, because there is so many in those classrooms that, you know, the the two cases we had knocked out eighty people today. Just because of the volume of contact that they have. Now, we should, we go hybrid, that allows us to have less of that contact with one another. And just like we were asking parents to do at the beginning of the day, assess your child before sending them to sporting events or practice to see you feeling okay, shortness of breath, persistent cough, runny nose, or a, not just a sniffly nose, but you know, something that that's more more apparent. Temperature is is coming up to be a big one now. All all of those different indicators to help make our, make those pods continually to be safe.
Tony, here's a question that came up from somebody that's listening. And they said they received a call from transportation today that the daughter was exposed on ten thirteen. Why did it take until today before you notified? I think that'd be a good one to clear up.
Yeah, we we weren't notified until this afternoon when we made those, made those telephone calls. Specifically from the transportation one, that that came in over the weekend. And it was, that was not something that we held on to. When when we get these, we get these reports of of positive cases, we work as quickly as we possibly can to identify and tell people as quickly as we can when we get that information. Sometimes we know ahead of time, whether whether it's a a family calling in preemptively. And there are times where the Department of Health gets ahead of, gets ahead of the game and they're able to to get ahead of the curve and and notify us. And that's, that can be our first point of contact. It it all depends on the speediness of of how we get information and how we're able to to work through that information to identify those close contacts so that people know with as much lead time as as possible. And and sometimes due to different different factors outside of our control, it 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 makes that time longer in certain circumstances than others.
And and normally, I'm not gonna, you know, put out questions for everybody, but to me, that helps explain to the board why things aren't instant, why it takes some time. Probably the longest time is from the Department of Health, the Minnesota Department of Health, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it parents? That's the best way, if they have doubt, you know, I can say keep them out, but notify us. Would you agree?
Yeah, I mean, the 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 best way to mitigate anything is to to have open communication with us, to let us know. That way, we can work through it and get people where they need to be and and help them get get back to school as quickly as possible.
More questions or thoughts for?
I have one, I just gotta figure out how to ask it.
Use your words, man.
Yeah. So in the grand scheme of things, when we have teachers and bus drivers out because of quarantine, not necessarily because of COVID, would more resources of of help in the school or more bus drivers, would that would that be an answer or not?
It's, I think, I think it's a, it's a start. But when you, when you take a look at the sheer number of people that a singular person, a singular case could take out, I mean, you're, like I say, the the cases we worked through this morning was eighty people in our district, pre K twelve. And and it it's, the resources are 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 great, the more teachers or the more, the more subs that we have, the more bus drivers, yes. But but at some point, we're gonna have numbers, numbers and numbers of kids out. And absenteeism is gonna be so large because of how how much contact they have with with one another every day, and despite our best efforts, whether it's in lunches or the the passing times and and trying to maximize space in classrooms. Sometimes that 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 six feet, that six feet marker for fifteen minutes through all the class period is is very, very difficult to come by.
But a hybrid, can you, can you give me your best guess, why, if we were in hybrid learning last week, what what the number of people that that would have affected? Can you, can you give me your best guess of what the number of people that would have been affected?
Yeah, I I would, I would say it'd be at least reduced by by more than half. In in some of these classes where we're able to to spread out where you you do get that true six foot, there's there's zero in a class. On a bus, the the time spent on a bus, because you don't have to stop at all those stops, may may only take out, you know, the two seats in front, two seats behind in the in the same row. So now you're talking.
Tony, you just, you you just said something, I mean, we don't know, so.
Okay. I'm I'm.
And socially distance them in a classroom? Then if somebody was positive in that classroom, they wouldn't be picked picked out for quarantine, is that what you're saying?
That's right. If if we had enough space and we could spread everybody out and somebody was positive in a classroom, we may not have to 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 identify close contact with anybody in that class. That's right.
Other questions?
There's another one online. John, I don't know if you want. I can ask it. Um, so there's a question, says, why are bus drivers quarantined but not classroom teachers with, where the student was?
That i- is, is a very, very tricky answer, and, and it's, I don't know why the Department of Health had come out, you know, in the end of, um, September and said that tho- those bus parameters, if you're on the bus for more than thirty minutes at a time, everybody on the bus is a close contact. I don't know if it has to do with ventilation, to be honest with you, that, that was what, what the Department of Health had said was, was the marker. In a classroom where a teacher is able to move around, uh, and not, not stationary in one spot, uh, teaching from very different points in the classroom, helping kids out, uh, here and there in a ninety minute block, and then moving on to the next. Um, you know, taking mass breaks and getting outside and, and hitting the reset button a little bit. Um, those, those are things that can help keep classroom teachers inside a classroom. It's, it's much more difficult for, um, the ECC to do that, just with the vast amount of help and direction that, that pre-k and kinder needs, uh, versus a, uh, an upper level elementary classroom, say a fourth, third, fourth, fifth grader, uh, that, that they, they can do more things independently rather than needing to hover over, uh, a child, helping them out, making sure they're on the right pathway. And those types of things.
And that's exactly what happened with one of our kindergarten classes a couple weeks ago, that the teacher is so close, the parent was so close, that that took out the whole classroom for fourteen days. Again, we were very fortunate because it occurred over the teacher's convention. So that helped save us some. Other questions?
I, I hate to keep on asking, but I'm gonna, so, um, so like, we got a certain amount of kids that are out on quarantine and staff right now. It's acceptable right now. Don't we think that it's just gonna kinda be a rolling number and kinda stay the same? Isn't that kinda the hope that it doesn't get higher? I mean-
Well, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have more kids in our classrooms on a more consistent basis and have less staff out, you know, I, I, I do recognize that, uh, transmission within the school as it is is significantly lower than it is in the home and in the community, where we're seeing most of the transmission of, of the disease, but at home, it's, it's one person or, or siblings, not eighty people, you know? So are we gonna, couldn't, could we have more, more kids test positive?
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, like, the ones that you, that got quarantined today in fourteen days, they're gonna be able to come back. You know, we, we, we got a bunch of kids back today. I just, I wonder if, like, the MEA break, if that, if maybe a couple days every other week or something wouldn't be enough to, rather than going full blown hybrid, you know, just, just having a reset period or, you know, just, just some time to, to jump the gap to try to, like a fire break. Like they, they built fire breaks to, to try to just break the, the chain, I don't know, I-
I, I hear you, it, it's just, it's so unpredictable, you know, so, some days, we, it was a Sunday, Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, others, it's a, it's a Friday, uh, Friday, Saturday, where we get to, it's, it's so unpredictable of when hours before, uh, symptoms. So if you get symptomatic on a, on a Saturday, we have to contact trace back through Thursday. And, and with sometimes in the, in an A and B, now you're talking, you know, eight classes, um, or, uh, you know, rather than four, if it's on a Sunday, he goes, we don't do anything on Saturdays, but then you go back to, to Friday, so we're, we're on a tw- a forty-eight hour watch when we take a look at those things.
Who's that forty-eight hours figure into the fourteen days? No?
Um, uh, y- y- yes, yes it does. So, so for example, um, we get notified of a, of a exposure date on a Wednesday, um, you know, the, the, the person gets symptoms on Wednesday night. We don't do anything as far as contact tracing until we have a positive result. Because, you know, we'll just be pulling our hair out trying to contact trace ahead of time, and then we get a negative result, and now we're, we've done all that work and, and we're, we're just stressed out about it. So we don't do anything until we get a positive result, so if we don't get that positive result until Saturday, and that exposure was on Wednesday, you know, we, we get together and then we go back from Wednesday being that starting point of that last exposure with that individual. So then we start counting our days. So is it a true fourteen days that they're out? In most instances, we are not seeing that. You know, we go back to, you know, on a Monday, the, the, we had a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Now we're at day six on Monday, when, when we, or Sunday when we start, start recalling. So a portion of that is already done, it's just, it's hard to get ahead of because of the, the time lapse between when the test comes in and when the test result comes in. I mean, shoot, my, my son had to go in for a test last week because he had a fever for about forty-five minutes. And we were precautions about it, he got a test on Wednesday, we didn't get it till Friday. You know, so it takes three days in, in some instances, and so you're kind of trying to get ahead, but you're still spinning your wheels because you're always behind in this.
So, I'm sorry for filibustering, so I have one more question. So if we choose to go to hybrid, how do we know when we come back out of it?
That's my, was my exact question.
What, what's, what's our- We're under, we're under state emergency orders for something that's been going on for six months, I think we could pull our heads out of our rear ends and, and get a plan, but I mean, as a school district, I, I would like us to have a plan so that we could tell the parents when, when we're gonna come out of it, so.
My, my personal opinion, um, we have to, I, I think the, the, the numbers in our communities that we serve, um, need, need to be down to more, more of a, a manageable level. Now, what, what, you know, it's a very vague term that I just use in manageable, but um, we, we've seen a very, very sharp increase in number of positive cases, um, in our, in our areas, uh, whether that's additional testing or whatever the case may be. We, we, I think, I think we need to see that our community numbers decrease. And, and we, it's, it's gonna be hard. I, I, I'm not, I can't sit here and tell you that it's not, not gonna be easy because we're, we're, we're told colon flu, it looks like COVID. So now you gotta go in and get your, get your child assessed because, um, they've got the stomach, they got the flu. I, I get it. Um, it, it's just so hard to, to decipher that out.
Uh, and give me one second, Don wants to say something.
And I don't, you know, with this whole thing, what I've been seeing, it's not kids. I mean, yes, they're testing, they're not having really symptoms, we're having trouble keeping staff in the building because-
I, I imagine that's a problem.
Yeah, that's, I think a bigger, a big picture, the big picture.
And then Tony, let me talk for a while.
Yep, go ahead.
Is, is how it's working on our staff members, like I said, you, you talked about having a reset. I think that, that's something we would do, if, for example, we lose a couple bus drivers or we don't have enough teachers, need to reset until we get people back. But Tony's absolutely right, what's going on in the community, it's not just the number, it's how are they occurring? So, if, if, if it's occurring in a family group here, one family, if we follow the, the strict guidelines, who could put us out right away? Where if maybe we see family numbers starting to go up, we're gonna have to take a, a relook. And that's where our, our team, they have to get together and discuss it. What I'm hoping we'll see is the number dropping and staying just in families.
Well, so Randy, a quick question, filibuster, so, yes. So, but we should be able to look at, go back to the Morrison County site that you had. And if royalty went back down to, I don't know what number would be, right, five, let's say. And hypothetically, and Bullis went back to whatever, two or three or five or whatever. And we can also, so that, let's say that brings our, our fourteen day case rate down, right? So now we have less in the community at Tony's point, and we would have to look, I think, how we are internally, right, because that could still, those five could all be teachers, they could all be bus drivers to say, okay.
All the custodians.
Right, custodians, right, so I think it's, it's truthful, in my mind, you have to look at the zip code to say, okay, how are we doing as a community, and then what's it like in school, right? So I think for, for a time there, we were okay in school where we didn't have a lot, right, so we're coming back, but then I'll, but now our numbers in Morrison County are up, so kind of does that. So in my mind, I would like to see us say, set two goals, or two parameters, right, and you need to see that because we just ended moving them, right, but see, that case, by then you would see that fourteen day active case go down to a level that gets us back into the state guideline for being in person and that, and I don't remember.
I, I, I wouldn't be, yeah, that's, that would be for ten thousand, but that's where, we're giving them a little more local control, I mean, this is what everybody wanted. Where, where we can start to make it feel necessary for the board.
Yep.
And if we start to see it falling, and the trend is falling, yeah, let's, let's bring them back. But there's so many variables. And that's the hard part to put a straight number on.
No, and I agree, but I think, then I think we also have to commit to a period of time that we're gonna be out as well, right? So not only so these families can prepare, but we're gonna say we're gonna do distance learning for, or hybrid, or whatever it is we're gonna do for two weeks, a month, and then we'll say, okay, we're gonna come back and revisit it, because I think if we switch too often, that gets to be just as hard, right? So I, I think, so I would, I definitely would like to see us have something where we talk about and I get it that there's things, but we, if we don't set boundaries, and that's where I feel some of this with the state and things that I, the things I hear in the media, it seems like it always is changing, right? So I, I would like to see us try to say, here's what we want, here's what we see as the goals, that if we can meet these, we're gonna get everybody back in the building. And I know that might be a challenge, but I think we have to start there, and then we can talk about it, right? We can put it out on the website, we can do things like that, say, well, here's where we're at, type of thing. I would, that's what I would think, I would love to see that from the state and the country, but, I don't know.
I, I would want to have solid, sort of, and something we've talked about. I'm just saying, as, as superintendents, I can tell you that we talked about plans, why, when if we did this, well, then what if those are just in one family? And, and different than if you have four cases in four different families, that's huge.
Well, but then, well, then the argument could be made today, why don't we stay in person? Because you told me today that two of them were in one family, right? Do you have a third? What was the third?
The, the third and fourth was in a different thing.
So we, so now we're really contained to just, you know, so I think then we should put a rule in for that then as well. Because otherwise, we're never gonna be back in school. I have to top of that.
And I, kind of off on Russ's, um, and on John's before, how we had kinda, you know, we have some local decision. I guess I'm still stuck, and I, I feel like Randy right now because I have a million questions in my head, but I'm still stuck, why we don't why none of our decisions are made on the severity of the case. You know, if there's just positives, but no one's being hospitalized, no one's dying thankfully, but I, I just don't, I don't see it ending. I'm with Russ, I just feel like once we go out, we're not going back in because it's gonna spread. Every time you get kids back together, it spreads.
That, that's what I mean about, you get, you have to have this revolving.
Right, I just, I, I don't see the benefit of it.
Oh, uh, Noel, you have the floor.
So, I'm reading this paper and it says recommendations for the twelve, move to hybrid, pre-K three, stay in person. There must have been up on top there, something in those numbers that prompted you to make that recommendation.
My, my recommendation, uh, comes first of all, the, the very young, um, biologically, they handle it better.
Yeah, I get all of that, I got, I've been listening really closely to everything. What I'm saying is, what in those numbers prompted you to make a recommendation to go to hybrid for four to twelve? Pre-K, stay in person. What in those numbers up there, or are you looking at something else besides those numbers?
I'm looking at something else besides those numbers, and, and, and that is, number one, we could, we could do hybrid for everybody. But to me, the problem is, when we're talking pre-K to three, those are maybe the most vulnerable for learning and need the most guidance and more people there. Um, when we get to, uh, fourth grade and fifth grade, those kids are a little more independent. And they can go turn on the computer pretty easily, and they can do a daily thing. Where it's very difficult for pre-K to three to do those type of things. Some of them, hey, I got a kindergarten, he, he can pop on, pardon me, he's a first grader, he pops on, no problem, but he still needs somebody there to help guide them through it. Where the third grader, or the fourth and fifth grader probably don't need that nurturing.
Yeah, I totally get that. Are pre-K through three, any less of a vector for this virus because they need that extra care?
From what we have found so far, we've had more outbreaks on the older kids. That's where they are, just that one kindergarten, one, they've shown, that's the only one.
But being a vector doesn't mean we have to have symptoms.
I totally agree, but, um, if you're asymptomatic, it's very hard to spot, I mean, we can put them all off. But I also, uh, know that becomes a huge problem for parents, but we wanna put our kids first and take care of. Um, if that's what the board feels, that we should, you know, take them all offline or bring them all in. Some are aligned, a lot, we're gonna have to draw a line, people are gonna have to say, um, they're not, they won't hold us harmless anymore. This is an effort to do it, um, and part of it was, we did away with fifth grade class, uh, today. Uh, a good share of a fifth grade class, everyone rode the bus, that made a difference. Um, we've had a couple in, in different grades in the upper levels, and that's because they've been symptomatic or, um, parents had them checked because of the situation they were.
Okay, um, so that's that part of it. So, what in all these numbers up top here would have to happen before you either go back or go further into total distance learning?
Number one, to me, we have to, and that could happen this week, when we get our new numbers on Thursday, that's one thing I was gonna ask for, uh, for the response given, for the permission for Randy, Russ and I to make a call, we had you on this for a little while.
So for us, following along at home, looking at the numbers, do we have any way of telling them what's gonna happen by the numbers?
Right, right now, by the numbers what's saying is it's gonna keep growing up. And, and if we're finding, number, number one, i- if we're finding spreading coming from the school, we need to go into distance for, that's an automatic. So if all of a sudden, we, we contact trace, that trace it back to coming from school, now we better close down the school for a while, have a restart to go from there. If the numbers continue to grow and escalate, the only thing that gave me hope today is we have dropped. We dropped by a little over a third, which was very nice. If that continues to drop, right, if we start jumping above that, and let's say we have over twenty, I, I don't, I hate to grab a random number. Uh, but if we see all is going up, we're going up, right now, rice is very stable for us, which is a good thing, and those are primarily our primary areas that we get from, then, then that's a good thing. Then, then that's a good thing. If it levels off and stays consistent, then if it's going down, now let's, let's bring them back in. If you want to set a couple of weeks and reevaluate, I think that's great. I agree. We don't want to go in, come out, go in, come out, go in, come out. I'm hoping by doing this, it slows the spread out. At the same time, we're, we're giving kids what they need. And, and I don't, I don't know if either one of my principals want to speak or not.
John, can you hear me? Um, I know some schools are using like two fourteen day windows as kind of their basis on how to make a judgment, whether they go back, they evaluate after two fourteen day cycles. So at twenty-eight days, they bring the data back together and see where the trend is going, if it's still going up. Or if community numbers along with the county numbers going down, then they make a decision as to, hey, we stay the course for a month, or hey, we're going to bring them back in person. Or the, the numbers warrant taking the next step up to the tier three. But it gives you kind of a measured timeline when you do that to about, once a month, you're taking a look at a number based on those two fourteen day cycles.
Thank you, Joel.
And, excuse me. By, by the fourteen day cycles, you mean distance learning? Is that correct?
No, I think when he's referring to, um, he's referring to hybrids.
Oh, okay.
Let's reevaluate what's going on after fourteen days, two cycles, he's saying twenty-eight days, so that'd be a lot. I, I would say what we need to do is, is constantly monitor and take a look to know where it's going. If it continues to go up at the exponential gra- uh, rate, which is usually a, a good, two weeks to, to four weeks, that's what he's talking about. You normally see the growth continue. The growth keeps going up the way this, we need to move to distance learning. And then once it starts to come down and falls, that's where you're looking for. If it's starting to fall, you know, we're not going to do it today. If it starts to fall, the opposite exponential, we cut it in half every, let's say, four to five days, that's kind of the landmark. Um, when Minnesota was really bad for a while, it was just under four days that exponential growth took place. If we're falling at that rate, that's good. How many cycles does it take to fall down there? That's the other question. Is it consistent? Is it going on on a daily basis? Or do we have that up and down, uh, heartbeat type of thing? Now, we, we have to stay consistent during those times where it fluctuates.
Cause I have one more, cause. I'm probably not the only one that's wondering it, but what is a fourteen day case rate?
Fourteen case, uh, day case rates, the very thing Tony was talking about.
Yeah.
He's tested.
I'm just lost on it.
And fourteen days during that time, either get better or get worse. Um, as, as we know, some people have been out for a long, long time. That, that happens. Other people, they're feeling pretty good. That happened in one case that, that a kid was, uh, very symptomatic, got tested and got better a few days later, came in before he got the test. Um, and, and that, that causes problems. So just how long does it take? It's how long, normally, when we say normally, it's active in the body. How long are you contagious?
But these numbers, the, the numbers that are on the top, so the counties at seventy-five point eight three and boluses, is that eight hundred and twenty-seven cases per ten thousand? Is that what that is or?
Yeah, that would be, uh, in bolus if they had that many. The reason I put that down there is they have such a small number of people, it doesn't take much. If you look at the whole county, obviously the county's fairly high, but that's for ten thousand people in the county, there's seventy-five point eighty-three.
It would help probably if it said fourteen day case rate on the study.
Yeah. And they're all based on.
Well, I didn't get it, I just.
Um, I was just notified by somebody, a little false is moving to, uh, uh, distance learning totally right now. And again, you can go on the, uh, the website to see on the Morrison County dashboard, you'll see exactly what the case rate is. That's where it was shown and, uh, we had it up earlier. I don't know if you still have that, but it might be worth putting that up there. Any other questions?
I just worry about the implications on a percentage of the kids being at home. It's not a decision that should be, that, that's a thing that we don't know, that's an un- unknown number, but them not being in school. And, you know, education, safety, there's a lot of variables moving around, so. And this is going to affect a lot of families in work and, you know, at, at some point, that's the wellbeing of the kid too, so.
So if we would go to what your recommendation, John, what, what's the plan for, uh, hypothetically, right, we say we want to change to, uh, an option, right? What does that plan going forward look like?
Uh, to me, moving forward, what that would look like, and, and talking to both principals and everyone in the following, is to take, uh, either start Thursday and Friday. Our original thought was Thursday and Friday, somebody brought to me, maybe just start it on Monday. Have two distance learning day to prepare everybody except for the pre-K.
They would just keep going.
To three. They would keep going except one day to help them kind of catch up and, and prepare someone for this. Um, I will put the caveat, if our numbers aren't, are jumping out of the, the roof, I would come back and, and that's where I'd like permission for you, I, in, in Randy, who states this, we can do. We can make a decision at the spot and then come back to the board. Well, we've got a board meeting on Monday. And, and that's the nice thing with this, we can come back and talk again on Monday if our rates are jumping out the ceiling. But, um, that might, we're, we're already going to be distance learning if you accept this on Monday. We do our first distance learning day. And I think what would be advantageous is make that first distance learning day, uh, be for everybody, pre-K through twelve.
The one, after thinking about the Thursday, Friday two, I, cause then, uh, even if we do a distance learning, that already sets up some of those people not to have be here. So I'm almost rethinking that as maybe not the best. Because if we go into the distance learning at least on Thursday and Friday, that still means, well, like, if we would take your recommendation, that, so pre-K through third grade would still continue as normal. That would mean part of four, half of the fourth graders, half of the fourth through twelve go with a ten school then? Or none of them?
Not for two days.
Okay.
You then it would start.
And you need those two days to.
Prepare the room, get everything straightened out, make sure everything's in line. Some of our teachers have already been doing that. Uh, they've been doing, uh, systematic, uh, teaching to distance learners now, um, which is very important. That's what, uh, the state has asked us to do this. So we said we would do, and we need to have that available at all levels. Others have not gone that way yet. And we're trying to help them out with that as best we can. Um, David has a good idea and that, that's why David had to be in that meeting, uh, on how everything's going.
And if, and even if we, so let's say we didn't want to, we want to start Monday. That still means we need somewhere, we need two days to get our classrooms and everything prepped. So we, you, you're just pushing the candle on the road if you don't start Thursday, Friday. Okay. And then Monday, so what would be then, so then just to get out of schedule, what would be the norm of schedule then? You'd have people in Monday, Tuesday, distance learn, everybody Wednesday, and then another group Thursday, Friday?
Uh, yes, that is how, that way Wednesday we clean up a little bit and, and go from there and prepare everybody. Except for pre-K through to three. Uh, Joel is kind of the expert, he's the one that made up, uh, a complete rotation. I, that was my original plan, or was what you said, Thursday and Friday, do that. And it's just, tell parents that's how it's going to be, please, you know, love and give my heads up on it. And with a decision tonight, we could let them know by the way that, um, they're, uh, four and five. Five to twelve would be out on Thursday and Fridays this week. And pre-K to, uh, three would be out on Friday.
So then you'd have everybody out on Friday?
Correct.
I just worry about prepare time, you know, and, and I don't know if there's ever going to be a good time, but, you know, anybody.
Kelly, well. I still go back to that decision. Parents can make of sending their children full-time or distance learning. I mean, that option is still out there. In my eyes, I just don't see a benefit to hybrid schedule. And that's just neat, but I don't, maybe I don't understand it enough. I don't, you know, because if, if parents are concerned, they can still have them distance learning. You know, I don't.
I think unfortunately, they kind of made it by not, so I think the state kind of plays a little bit of a trick on us, right? So instead of not giving us solid guidelines or things to, you know, they're, they're giving it, oh, it's, it's the district, you get to decide. Well, we've got websites that are, you know, five days old or three days old. And now the onus doesn't go back to the state, right? And the guy, it's on, oh, well, us, five or six of us voted on it. So it's Russ's fault because you didn't go out early enough, or you should have kept them in school, you know? So I do see the advantage of hybrid because at least the kids do get to come into school. I know asking my kids, whether they would want to, you know, distance or hybrid, they still would want them to go to school to be able to see some of the people.
Right.
Less for, you know, in their mind, I think less for the education. But I still think their kids in my mind are going to learn more in school, but they still want to socialize, right?
And that's my point exactly, is that parents and kids are comfortable sending them. I still think they have, should have that option to send them five days a week. And if parents or kids are uncomfortable, then they wouldn't have to come. I mean, because from what I hear, most kids want to come to school. I, I don't.
Is there a line, um,
Yep.
where the state will step in and say, you guys are not doing.
Well, sooner or later, yeah. And we'll lose our harmless, hold harmless. But here's, here's the problem right now. We're not just, we are not six foot away from everybody in the classroom. That's not happening.
So now it's masks and six foot again?
Well, that's what the size is. It's mask and six, we're supposed to try to maintain six foot, but we can't do that in all our classrooms. And the state understands that when we go to hybrid, it must be at least six feet with masks. And in the lunch, that's where they really have to be off with the mask.
I just want to say, it's not going to be the students that put us in this. Again, I go back to, we lose one more bus driver, we don't have a problem. We lose, you know, we've had six pairs out, which we're still good, but we started losing teachers, we don't have anyone to teach. That's where, that's where it's going to be really messy. It's not going to be kids wanting to be here, because I think they want, they want to be here. It's going to be the staff. That's what, what I'm seeing. Every time I get an absentee report, every day I'm just like, whoa. That's what's going to create the mayhem is staff not being, not being here.
So does this go to a hybrid? Does this protect the staff?
That, it doesn't totally protect them, but it does it better because the distance between them. All you have to do is work with Tony, or you could work with Joel. Both of them have been in on, just as not lying, but they've been in with the contact tracing. And that's why, for example, uh, the school bus ends up losing them all, because why? They were too close together in a confined area with little circulation. And, and.
Well, the school bus you're going to get anyway, right? Cause most bus drivers are going to be on with the kid in one thirty minutes unless if they're like the first kid that gets dropped off. So I don't know what you can, if we can protect it, I, I don't know how you bubble suits.
I, I was using that for example.
Yeah, but, yeah.
But now all of a sudden you spread them out the classroom where they're over six feet away. And I agree with John. We, we weren't too far away from shutting it down two weeks. Because we didn't have enough teachers. Or because we don't have enough bus drivers. We were one bus driver away. So we're trying to protect everyone. Bus drivers, because we don't have, uh, very many of them and it's limited, we have that problem.
So when we lose these teachers, is this because someone tested positive and they got contact traced?
Right, um, I think Tony, Tony has a better indication, but it's, they were exposed or they were sick and had to get tested. Um, it's a whole combination of things. It's, it's not even so much the classroom. It's the ones we've gotten is I've, you know, my, you know, my family had tested positive and I, you know, touched contact. I'm not feeling well, I had to get tested. We've had many instances of that. So, you know, they're out until the test results come back. That can be two days to a week. So, you know, and.
Whereas they had contact with someone who was positive, that's two weeks off, but.
So I mean, it's, I, again, it's truly, it's not our kids. Our kids are coming through this pretty good. It's, it's the adults in, in the equation.
Well, it's, it's also if they have any symptoms. They have two minor symptoms or one major symptom, then they, they're out and they have to get tested. Or, no, this is, no, this is something that's reoccurring.
Right.
That's the key. For example, I have hay fever, uh, I've had it for months, it's just reoccurring.
And I do want to explain the hold harmless. The reason the protocol is so strict is the state will hold us harmless if there's an outbreak and somebody wants to sue. Being it's a pandemic or wants to file a work comp claim because they got COVID at work. So we are held harmless as long as we follow the strict protocol that they put in place for us. As soon as we stop following that protocol, we lose our hold harmless. We can go into litigation, we can have many work comp claims filed. I don't think they'd go through, but.
Mr. Shear, so, uh, I don't know if you start to be, so it's a great question, all had, so East Sibley High School. Uh, Sibley East High School, this was last one, and it is an interesting, they had, they wanted as a board. I think, I feel similar to what we, we hear a lot of parents want their kids to go, they want to go every day. So their board tried, they passed, saying they want to come back, they were in hybrid, they wanted to come back in full. And that lasted four weeks until, uh, this Department of Education, uh, came in and shut them down. And, um, yep, and they, they actually, of course, defined the state could prompt legal battle, lost funding, fines and jail time from the school board members.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
So it's, it's been tried and, and I think at some point.
What you're saying is once you go to hybrid, you ain't coming out.
No.
I think we have to have guidelines that tell us what says we can get back and what can't.
And that's what.
I think it's important.
That's what I was asking, you know, what prompted you to recommend hybrid and what's going to prompt you to recommend going back to school?
I saw an increase in occurrences coming to school. If it continued and a rise in the whole county and in Royton and in Bolles. If it continues to climb up there, then we need to go to distance learning. If it goes down past where we are now, then I think we need to come out of hybrid.
Would it be irresponsible to wait till the numbers come out on Thursday to make the decision?
We need to make the decision to prepare our families. We need to make the decision to prepare our families.
I think it's gonna go up just by what I'm seeing in like the state today, I went on on and and they had Morrison County with thirty one today, and I mean. Way back when we were like five, three, zero, so. And that, but the 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 problem is with the data again is, I don't know if those thirty one are for tomorrow or if they were for two weeks ago.
They're delayed.
They're delayed, so you can't.
You're kind of at the mercy of what the Department of Health does and our county, cuz I think you get real time numbers, don't you, from the county? Department of Health?
As close as they can be. Because that's that's where we run into trouble.
Yeah.
Putting your finger in the wind and hoping that you get the right thing, right, I mean.
So Randy, are you saying? Wait for this Thursday for next week?
Yeah, that's what I. I mean, okay, so let's say we did, hypothetically, we make a decision to go into hybrid tonight. We push out the emails to the parents tomorrow and Thursday comes and the numbers go down. What the hell are they doing, you know? I. The it would be nice to deal with real time data, but we just don't have it. I just don't know if it's irresponsible to wait for it or not, that's.
Would there be a suggestion to? You know, by um consensus that if the numbers go up. But then you were still having no former parents, that would, then they're on pins and needles, so I don't know if that would work.
Well. They're gonna be on pins and needles and they're gonna be on fire if we, and it, no matter, if if this COVID thing, there's only one thing I figured out about it. All it does is divide people. People that would normally get in a room and be able to get along can't because some people like masks and some people don't, and some people like to do this and some people don't. And everybody, there's not enough facts, there's not enough science behind any of it to know, anybody to know what the real truth is. And here we are, well, the numbers are kinda going up, and when they kinda go down, we still can't go back, so. Yeah, I just, I really think that we're gonna get crucified by a lot of parents if we decide to go to. And and I I'll be one of them, if if we decide to go hybrid and then the numbers go down and we really didn't need to. Or, I don't know, I don't know how anybody else feels.
Be a lot easier if if you said. Like what I understood initially was. We're at this level, which is fairly comfortable level, if we go up to this level, we're gonna have to go hybrid. You know, um. I mean, what we're doing is we're trying to gain it and say, we look like we might go up to that number, so we should go hybrid preemptively.
Well, with the idea that you're trying to be proactive to allow the parents.
Right.
Time, I mean.
I I think the we are at the number where we should go hybrid, right, I mean, they advise that we would go hybrid, right, John?
Well, that's what other schools have done in our system.
But I mean, at at this rate where we are, the state, the guideline would tell you that would be to go to.
That that would've been a week ago, right?
I thought these numbers were higher than the ones that I originally saw.
Yep.
But I, you know, they could've changed it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's why it comes off the way it does.
Is there any way possible on, I mean, as far as the recommendation to do pre K through five, or is that impossible with the space?
I I just think with with it, we can, but I I. I would feel a lot more comfortable right now to do it this way, um and and see what, as time goes on, what happens.
Cuz I just think that would put less parents.
Well, by time you're to sixth grade, there's a lot of parents that would feel.
Right.
Able to let their kid at home, and I agree with that, I.
I just didn't know if we could, you like if we did pre K through six, I mean, is there anywhere? Or through five, sorry, is there any, you know, like, is there anywhere on the days there's not kids in school here that we could, you know, I mean, is there?
Spread them out more.
Right.
Ellie, uh can I make a comment?
Yep.
Uh it's the uh, some of it is dealing with the transportation at the hybrid, any type of hybrid. You're limited to fifty percent capacity on your buses. And so, when you do the math, K, if you go K five in person, you got four hundred students, and then you're doing half. Of the high school at about two fifty, you're at about six hundred and fifty students attending on any given day, we have. Capacity on our buses at eight buses, fifty percent is three hundred, little over three hundred students can ride the bus. So that's where you start getting it to trying to cut down the amount of people, uh you gotta take into account walkers, drivers, bike riders, skateboarders. However, people getting rides, um.
Building a cannon.
Yeah, you're yeah, right, you gotta take those all into account, but when you start, the more grades you put on to the transportation. In the hybrid, the more uh difficult it becomes to make it feasible. So, cuz right right now, eight routes at thirty eight kids a bus is three hundred and four kids. We can legitimately put on a bus on any given day in the hybrid.
Are we going to be able to buck the K through three, plus half the students or not?
Uh Galen has been working with. Uh almost endlessly working on coming up with a plan so she could um. Do that, and um it does require, you know. I got asked if I can bring my kids to the school and they can hop on a bus at school cuz it leaves more room. On route number ten to get more kids on the bus and stay under that number. So she's twisting those types of things to help make this work as best it can. But that that fifty percent on the bus is a real uh, is a real tight um. Guideline that we have to follow, and that that's what makes this. Hybrid at the ele, in person at the elementary and hybrid at the high school. Is kind of a math problem for us.
Joel, is there any way, you know, at the beginning of the year, I know we reached out to parents to see if they could bring them to school? This is something we put out in, you know, that K through five, we could make have in person, but we would need. You know, really emphasize on how big of a problem the busing is, do you think anyone would?
That has been put out, uh filled in last week and we got some response, that's what allows us to do what we are now, originally. Uh it was uh pre K through one, and now it's extended far.
I I was gonna say, we we did get a pretty good turnout, um I mean, response from parents, so that's helped. A lot, and we've kinda somewhat reached a compromise, you know, at the elementary, I've been arguing. For keeping it in person, but as they said, the busing has been a problem, so getting those. Parents willing to transport has helped out a lot. So it looks like we're pretty good for K three, and if there's ways to get around the busing with four or five. We're gonna continue to look at it, I mean, I will continue to look at it to see what can be done, because ideally, that's what we'd like to see is hybrid. If we have to at the high school, but keep um preschool through five open as much as we can. But I think getting to grade three has been quite an accomplishment from where we started, cuz we're really looking just at pre K and one.
Yeah, cuz I, parents would, if I had that age, you know, giving up maybe a half hour of work time in the morning to get them here at eight o'clock. Compared to an entire day of having to stay home with them. I mean, I would do anything I could, I guess, to get my child here.
That's something that we could think about is. We're gonna go. K through three. Full meal deal. But four and five, if you want your kid to go to school, you gotta bring him here and pick him up.
We've gotta be a little careful of that, um and it actually was pointed out to me by Tony first. It is uh that would be privileged, and we can't discriminate if somebody doesn't have a means to do that. Um then then we're looking at problems that way. Um so we we can't actually do that, but then we talked about a little bit. Is parents, we do not have to fund transportation for um essential care, childcare. For fourth and fifth, but if their parents are bringing them here for essential childcare, why not put them into the classroom? If there's room, I haven't had that, if there's room.
The other thought I I had heard from a parent is, one of the challenges too, because, you know, a lot of people. From Royalton commute to St. Cloud or Sartell or wherever to work, right, I mean, um they head that way. But I think one thing that they get, that is a challenge for them is if they bring in their kids too early to the elementary. And I don't know that this helps this issue, but if they come in, let's say they wanna bring them in like seven fifteen or seven thirty. I think, I think they end up having to put the kids in the MAP program, and then they end up getting charged like for an hour in the MAP. Do we, and and I don't know, this would be something that Phil would have to consider, would it even work, I don't know if it would solve the problem, but. What if we let them bring those kids in and we wouldn't charge them, could that help levees, you know? Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, I I don't know. So maybe opening that up to drop off, but maybe something to look at as well.
But the numbers, I'll go back, what do the numbers really tell us? We should be in distance learning. Um and and what I encourage you is blend it together and see how it works. We can kick the can down the road, if the numbers keep going up, we will be out for the drops, we can be that. I'm trying to to run as safe as we can with the knowledge that we have with the incidents that we have. Thanks, Tom.
What, I haven't?
Oh, I thought you just stopped the guy from running the machine outside of the door.
Oh, that too. Thank you for sharing. I was like, what, I'm pretty?
No.
So I guess I would. I don't know if anybody else, otherwise I'm gonna. Are you ready for that, right?
Yeah, the horse is dead.
Okay, I don't know if it is for sure or not, but I'm sure we can continue to talk a little.
Yeah.
I I will make a motion to follow Superintendent Phelps's recommendation that we move grades four through twelve to hybrid. Pre K through three, stay in school or stay in person, um I would also like to add that we would. I I think do this for commit to doing it for the next month. After, you know, the, as Joel talked about, the two fourteen day cycles, we review. The the cases again to see where we're at, maybe we have to have another special board meeting. And to review that, so I would say I would add that, um.
He's taking notes here.
I'm trying.
I was trying to get to the right screen, but yes, I won't.
So I I'll make the motion to 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 move for four and twelve to hybrid, pre K through three, stay in person. I would like to see us commit to this for a twenty eight day period, which upon that, the board would go again. We review the numbers maybe in a special meeting to to say, okay, here's where we are with COVID. Do we come back, do we not?
I have a question.
Yes.
What do you call normal learning?
Well, back in person, thank you.
In person.
Everybody back in person, or or we have to.
Are you saying one month or are you saying thirty school days?
We think you say.
Twenty one days would be a month.
Yeah, it's calendar days. We're dealing with the vibe, it's not.
Exactly, I'm just thinking Thanksgiving falls on the twenty sixth, I think it is. And we're out on Wednesday before the twenty fifth. We start on the twenty sixth.
Would come back on the twenty sixth, or that's when we have school again, okay, yep. I don't have a calendar up, I'm sorry.
This is Wednesday, the twenty sixth is Thanksgiving.
So I'm saying after Thanksgiving.
It'd be nice to know coming out of Thanksgiving, so.
When's our regular meeting?
On that month?
Yeah.
It's probably right after, the Monday after.
The twenty eighth.
We should be able to.
Twenty third is on Monday before Thanksgiving.
Is that our board meeting?
Yes.
We should be able to make a decision then. Yes, that's my new motion, can we add that?
Well, that that would almost say what you're saying.
Yeah.
Put it in that timeline.
Yeah. Where we reevaluate that.
Reevaluate, that's a good one.
Well, we continue, but I think.
Reevaluate on the uh.
On, what's the date?
The twenty third, regular board meeting.
And I think it would go to going.
What year is it?
If the numbers go completely up, so that parents can be aware of that too.
Yeah.
I mean, like right on the shot, cuz even though this is.
Well, we could go either way at that point or stay the same, I mean, that that should be. That should be uh. Communicated to the public that, you know. There there's two things, that the that this decision is not a light decision to make that's made and that. We we have to, we're we have to have time to decide, and that's that's what it will be, so I'm gonna read this. Director Garrett's moved to move the district into hybrid learning with K through three in in-person learning. As recommended by Superintendent Phelps. And then reevaluate on November twenty third at the regular board meeting. As to what comes next or what?
That's a good way to put it there.
And what did you say?
Continuation of this.
Procedure for.
But also you need to make sure that if our numbers jump considerably, so you have to go in the distance learning, there's not gonna be a question.
Randy, Susan wants to read that too.
So this is what I wrote, and tell me if I wrote it wrong, cuz you changed some of the words that I had written.
Yeah.
Motion to move four through twelve to hybrid and preschool through three in person as recommended by Superintendent Phelps until November thirtieth. Reevaluating to come back in person or continue on at the November board meeting.
Put a date on that November board meeting.
November twenty third.
And and put regular in there. Regular board meeting, Superintendent.
The regular board meeting on November twenty third.
We gotta get it right.
Yeah, again, I would say that the jumps Thursday, if the results are, or even tomorrow, I might be going. Guys, I'm sorry, we're gonna have to go distance.
Well, I imagine that could happen at any time, I mean.
Is that not written that way?
Well, then I think, yeah, so then we can say, Susan.
To continue.
Yeah, the the.
The board deserves the right to.
To reevaluate at any point based on.
At some point, obviously, we don't have a choice actually, now we know. You know what I mean? I mean, if we.
So Susan, did you add, the board has. The board.
I wouldn't even say that, I wouldn't start.
Okay.
I would say, depending on. Increase or decrease, the board will make a decision to continue with hybrid. Go back to in person or go to the distance.
And I think that the point is no, we, the the distance could happen at any time, at any time.
Or maybe, maybe we just add that.
Yeah, what you're really.
Distance learning.
What you're really.
You got all that?
You're trying to communicate to the community what the actual situation is, where. That should be communicated through every means possible. And it should be like a continuous communication and updates of. The number has been going up, we're looking at hybrid next week.
I don't think it'd be bad to, it's bad to communicate that the. You know, that the number one spreader in the district has been the school bus and that it's our biggest, one of our biggest problems.
I agree with that.
The spreader hasn't been the school bus.
Well, okay, the the quarantine.
Yes.
The safety measures, the the number one, I mean.
The safety measures, and that's exactly what quarantining is, is the safety measure. The number one way to prevent it is by parents following all the rules and and. Everything possible, if and not, keep them out.
Well, I do have a little bit of an issue with that statement, but. I mean.
I know.
And if. If wearing a mask does it, then what do you, if you wear a mask every day and you get COVID, then. Then, yeah, you know, so I I. Everybody just has to try, I mean, everybody can be doing all the right things and still still have a an outbreak, I. Just because somebody had outbreak doesn't mean they didn't follow the rules, or it might mean they did.
I totally agree with that.
I'm just thinking of the person who's gonna have to go tell their boss. Their work hours have to be adjusted because of this. The more lead time they have.
Right, right.
You know, to tell their boss that, the better off they're gonna be. So it's on us to communicate that to the community. What we're thinking, what we're looking at, you know?
And Director Garrett's, did you want to put a starting date on that?
Yeah, I think we need to define what this next week will look like, and in fact. I know we have. Sorry, this is a, I know we have John's form, we talked about having a review. I almost, I think it's so important that we get this information out there ASAP if we're gonna make this that. I would almost like to. Give John the capacity, sorry, to go to do this and reschedule this the second part, because I think. If we even even.
We're gonna be here till ten o'clock, otherwise.
Twenty four, you know, even if, even if John has to, you know. If we can get it out tonight, that'd be great, so I'll so I'll add on to that, that. Um, it would be like what you talked about, John. Right, pre-K through three would continue this whole week or no? Can you tell us what the plan you would like to follow? Just so I'm clear.
Okay, so pre-K through three. Would continue all this week.
Okay, even Friday?
Not not Friday, pardon me. And there we go, Thurs- Thursday. Pre-K up through, uh, pre-K up through Thursday or this week, Friday. Everybody is in distance learning for one day. Hopefully that will give our parents an opportunity. To find daycare for individuals.
Can I?
Staff is still reporting, correct, John?
Staff reports every day.
So. What if, so just as a thought to make to see, and I don't know, principals, John. What if we had Friday? Just be a snow day, not necessarily be a snow day, still have. And I guess I don't know what you mean, to me, when I'm thinking distance learning, the teachers are still teaching, everybody's still logging on.
Correct.
Do we, does that give them enough time to be ready to go with this on Monday, even if they're doing that?
I believe so, but let's go to see what our principals have to say. Joel's up first.
Since February.
Joel?
Yeah.
So Joel, the if, if we would move to this approach and Friday is a distance learning day. Does that still give the teachers capacity enough so on when Monday comes around, we're doing hybrid? From four through twelve, does that still give them enough time to prepare? Or do we need to look at, I don't know, snow day or something, where still the teachers are here, but the kids are off?
I, if you're gonna go one day, I would go without kids and just call it a snow day or a planning day, I guess.
We're talking two days for you, though.
If you're doing two days, then I would go distance learning, a distance learning day Thursday and off on Friday. And staff report. I mean, I guess that would be my recommendation, because they are teaching during that distance learning time and they're online with kids and. It doesn't really give them the opportunity to get their room, it really, it is physical, it's physically getting the rooms prepared. Getting desks out, I mean, my direction is that I only want the number of desks for the number of kids that you're gonna have in the room, so we're properly. Maintaining the social distancing, um, you know, and so that's the. That's the stuff that they're gonna have to get ready and. If you're gonna go a distance learning day Thursday, that'd be fine if you were gonna go a. If you were gonna go a day without kids on Friday. I guess that's where I would be at.
Yes, learning isn't gonna allow the staff to.
Right.
To to physically move the school.
So that's why I think, that's why I think.
Do we have to go Thursday? Do you have to do the Thursday if you're gonna go without kids Friday? Would one day without kids and go in person until Thursday at the end of the school day and Friday, they're off for planning and prep for Monday?
That's what I was going to add, and I think if we kept Friday completely free of the teachers in school and the. Uh, no students, I think that one day should work.
I agree.
Might be asking a lot of parents not to be in school both those days.
Okay, so so we're saying that, okay, so we're gonna have, so the plan would be, we're communicating, kids are gonna continue to come to school, all kids till Thursday.
Correct.
Yes.
Friday is gonna be. Uh, I'm missing a prep day and off day, but kids will be off.
Teaching.
Teachers, teachers will report, but it would be prepare, get things ready, move desk, do whatever that I don't know they're asked to do.
Yeah.
Right.
I think that'd be a good plan.
So I don't know if we can add that or not, but clear as mine.
You just amended it.
Okay.
But I think you have to have a second.
It does allow for clear communication of that too, it's, I mean, it's pretty clear cut what we're doing. Um, there's no question, you have some kids in school, some kids not in school on Friday, it's everybody is, everybody is off. It frees up older siblings to take care of younger ones if they need to, it frees up babysitters, it frees up the whole works kinda. And it allows the most, I mean, I think, I think one day of dedicated time is better than two days of split time between teaching and trying to get it ready.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Somebody wanna read it?
Can I try to read it again?
Yes, please.
Motion to move four through twelve to hybrid and pre through three in person as recommended by Superintendent Phelps. Friday, October twenty third will be a planning day, no school pre through twelve. Do you want me to add, all staff will be present?
I think they know they have to report.
Okay, um, reevaluating to come back to in-person, continuing on hybrid or distance learning depending on the numbers as needed. Reevaluating at the November twenty third regular board meeting. Does that cover what you guys wanted it to cover?
Pretty much exactly what we said. Yeah, but we didn't say it that nice.
Took us a lot longer to get there than it did.
Just trying to paraphrase you guys.
Yes.
And that was made by Russ.
Yeah.
Yes. I need a second. Oh, that's all right.
I need a second.
He's old timey.
No, you need a second to the motion. Seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion?
No, just second.
You're you're fine, don't worry.
No, excuse me.
Yeah.
Is there going to be anything said to the parents about having to go to distance learning?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I will.
All right, yeah, because I wanna make sure that that's perfectly clear. Because otherwise, I'm gonna get phone calls from those sick bullies, parents, families telling me, uh, why didn't you tell us this?
Okay, any other discussion?
Sorry.
No.
All right, do we have to read it again or not?
I think it was good.
Not for me.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion made by Director Garrett's and seconded by Director Gerard, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All who oppose? All who abstain? Or to approve the motion five zero zero. All right.
So.
While we have another discussion, we have, all right, moving on. Item B, budget finance, oh, do you have something on the?
Well, I just said, I would like you to move so I can get going on this to cancel the close, to cancel the close. Meeting for tonight, and matter of fact, if you write out anything, I would accept that and write, that would be wonderful. Then I've got that.
Well, we could have done that last time and they chose to.
I understand.
Meet in person.
Do that.
We'll reschedule this. Um, I moved to cancel the, with the urgency of of. Of trying to get to parents, um, I moved to cancel the superintendent's evaluation and the closed meeting part.
Also.
It's been moved and seconded to cancel the closed meeting part of this meeting, any discussion?
Like to see that scheduled maybe next week.
What's what's scheduled?
The evaluation.
Go back to the evaluation.
What what is the dates?
Or even close the meeting after the meeting next week.
We have the regular meeting next week?
Yes.
Yes, that's cool, let's, all right, can I? Who who seconded it? You care if I amend it? I'm gonna amend it that we move it to after the regular meeting next week.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to move the closed meeting to next Monday night after the regular meeting. Any discussion?
Let's keep that one short.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? All abstain, motion passes five zero zero. All right, moving on to item B, discussion item B, budget and fund balance.
Yes.
Don, you got some information for us?
I do, I put it all on your desk, I met with the finance committee. On Tuesday, um, to go over our year end, I, we had an audit, um, a preliminary meeting with our auditors this morning. What?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Um, if you look at first page, I know Ellie, Noel and Mary saw some of it, then Russ has been in to talk to me. We are, we're gonna end of the year with the with the fund balance, I can see at the bottom of highlighted. Um, the SOB calculation. It was discussed, I I'm gonna, I'm just, I'm gonna just tell you, that's what we're ending at for this year. Because we're only worried about, um, I wanna assign a fund balance for some HVAC and roof and some, it was, it was discussed at the finance committee meeting. That we would like to assign some unreserved fund balance to some roofing costs that are gonna come up in next year, in the next one to three years. And some reading program, um, that was discussed at the finance committee meeting. So I am looking to, um, move six, approximately six percent over to assign it for that. I'm gonna go through this, but I just wanna get that spiel taken care of before.
Are there rules about how you can?
Yeah.
One-time money on.
No, this is all general fund, when you can assign a fund balance in any, on unreserved, I can assign it. Then through our policy, just by a majority vote, if we commit a fund balance, then it has to go through board resolution, that's our policy.
Cause I had a couple ideas on spending it.
What was your recommendation?
Well, I think everybody in this building's gonna get taxed by the end of the year. And I don't think it'd be outlandish to. Maybe try to find another custodian and, uh, you know, just, just some help in the building, even some. Just a. Emergency, we're in this peacetime emergency, as long as this peacetime emergency is going on, we could hire some pairs or some help and some. You know, if we got, if we got teachers that are quarantined, do we have to have a parent or a a person?
Yeah, they have a licensed teacher.
You have to have a licensed teacher. So I just, I'm just trying to think of how we can, I I'm trying to keep the doors open.
We can assign it as an open assignment and just hold it for those purposes. Um, I was talking to my auditors, our, your auditors, our auditors today. And we had come up with these ideas and they said, is, you know, it can, it can be an assigned fund balance for future needs of the district.
And then I drove to school today and I see there's four point seven five acres for sale over there.
Yeah, but they want.
Yeah, they want, they want over a half a million.
Dollars for it.
Yeah, it's reality.
We we couldn't even, what would you anticipate, do you wanna build a elementary extension?
I'm expecting to see a, one of those, uh, what do they call them, the big sports complexes.
Oh, the field house. I do wanna, I wanna reiterate though.
I I'm just telling you what people like. You you, when that's gone, you find another four acres with the walking distance of the school. You find it, you ain't gonna.
I will just wanna tell you guys, our numbers have dropped this year, we are negative twenty-two kids so far. Um, we've lost, I mean, we've gotten some, but in in the elementary, we've lost thirty, 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 and in the high school, we've lost thirty-two. But we have gained some of that, so we have a net minus twenty-two right now. So that's going to impact our our budgetary numbers this year, so, um, just keep that in mind when when we're when we're looking at this.
I'm just an idea guy, that's all I am, I mean, it's.
Yes.
Second, so I have two questions. Um. I like, kinda like Randy's idea, but I think, I I'm just worried about, right, we're coming off the second year of. And of our budget from the from the state and you know, next year, we're gonna.
We're not gonna get a new.
We're gonna take a block kicking on, so I I, I'm worried about that, but.
If we didn't have the discussion, we would be doing our job, that's.
The other question I would have, Don, I know one time we talked a while back, I only bring this up because you mentioned about the twenty-two. Have we heard anything from the state where they talked about, they talked about, oh, we're gonna not gonna look at this year's because we know all the. The kids in public schools are homeschooling, so we're gonna look back at twenty nineteen numbers.
This was introduced to the legislature, it was just, it's just a bill that's been introduced, it may not go anywhere, we don't know.
Okay.
Um, we won't know that until May or June. That's how the legislature works. Um, so we could be held harmless, but right now, I'm not budgeting like we're gonna be held harmless, we are, we are negative twenty-two kids. Plus any PSCO that's full time, I think there's ten or eleven. So we're gonna be down thirty some children if it if it plays out like this.
If they don't pass that, they're gonna have to bail out Minneapolis-St. Paul school districts.
They keep bailing them out.
Yeah.
Um, and I think too, for Don's sake, I mean, with the fluctuation of maybe hybrid, maybe out, you know what I mean? We could lose more kids.
Oh, I imagine, yeah.
So I I do wanna assign it so it's designated. For many reasons, um, and I think the finance committee was totally on board with that. Um, but when I talked to the auditors about it today, um, they were very adamant saying, you may need that cushion. Don't, don't spend it right away.
But there's no guarantee we're gonna get there.
Right, we may not get an increase with this, there's a new by any of this coming up in July. Um, they were talking about tax shifts again, back to the local, which I don't even wanna talk about it, it makes me upset. Um, there's a lot of things that are going on at the state level right now, right now, they said they can cover everybody, but I don't know where they're getting their dollars from, so. I recommend to the board that we do assign a fund balance for future uses and we can determine what those uses are and then. Have it designated.
Will that protect that money?
Yes.
Yeah.
It'll go into what we call a four sixty-two, which is, it's part of the, it's not the unreserved, it's in the assigned fund balance, it holds it. Separate from what our operating dollars will be.
Is that at the top of the safe or at the bottom?
It'll be on the side.
It's in the mildew area.
So, I mean, when the auditors present on November twenty-third, there is gonna show that our, that we have this on balance yet. But it'll show that this much, the six percent is assigned and then the rest is used for operational. But she was.
What about the, we we have looked at the elementary building and making changes there.
Yeah.
Are there monies dedicated to that yet?
That's gonna be potentially part of this, but we do have some capital dollars that I've been holding, that I'm not holding, we've been saving, we've been very frugal. That's gonna be potentially part of this, but we do have some capital dollars that I've been holding, that, not holding, we've been saving, we've been very frugal. Um, and L T F M and I think are building costs now, um, with the building age have evened out, and I shouldn't see it as huge negative. Now, keep in mind, we will see a negative impact on our levy for next year because. I had to forecast last year, you always have to levy one year ahead, and I think I was, if we hold to this, where we're, where I'm budgeting for a thousand twenty-one. Adjusted pupil units, we're gonna owe some money, cause I think I, I went at a thousand thirty, when I, when I, um. But levied it, when I went through the levy, so it's always a guessing game, so we will see, we will see a negative impact on that, I. I couldn't forecast due to COVID that we were gonna lose children.
Yeah.
You know.
But also are some monies dedicated to the playing fields, to other recreational areas?
That's all part of our unsigned, that's all our operating costs.
Okay, so that's just kinda folded into that.
Yep, well, we have long-term facilities maintenance dollars, and the fields, all those fall into that, those projects fall into that, parking lots fall into that. Um, a lot of the building stuff, so we do have, we have about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in a fund balance on that. Um, like I said, we did have a ninety, two years of forty-five thousand negative adjustments on L T F M because of the, the building age issue. So we are building that, we are, we do really have to, you're right, facilities, the roof, there's a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar. There's three pieces to the roof that I think Noel and Mark were up, and there was a puddle or. And it's gonna be about three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to repair just that piece, so. We do wanna reserve some dollars for that, cause that's gonna happen in the next two to three years, we're gonna have to do something with that roof.
Okay, yeah, I think you have a good idea of just reserving it for future needs.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
That'll leave it open for whatever.
For discussion, I mean, for.
Yeah.
A need, it's not, I'm assigning for this purpose only, it's for future.
Are we gonna do that at the next meeting?
Um, if we could go by consensus that it's a good idea, the auditors would, then I could start, they could redo their preliminaries and I could. Start my N D, M D and H reporting, that, they have to have it done by November sixteenth, so we're on kind of a tight deadline, that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for protecting that money.
It's gonna be, but it's gonna be about six percent, we're gonna, and if you guys look at.
So six percent's protected that way, and the other eighteen is protected one.
Well, and I also, I went back, yes, I went back and read our policy, just on the fund balance. And it really reads that we have a minimum of fifteen percent, we don't wanna go be, below that fifteen percent. But we should try to stay above, that fifteen percent doesn't mean we should stay at fifteen percent. And for smaller districts, especially what we're going through now, they're recommending that we have a cushion because she didn't really wanna say doomsday.
Well.
But.
M S B A recommends you run an eighteen percent fund balance.
Yeah, and we'll be around that.
We went down is because we couldn't maintain it three years ago or two years ago.
Right, and it's not about maintaining that fifteen or eighteen percent, it's a minimum, you don't wanna go.
Yeah, but we had to move it down because we couldn't maintain the eighteen, so.
Right, and I think, you know, if we wanna have the pandemic. We are moving in such a great direction, we had the most children we've had in five years. I mean, and, and from my perspective, that's great, means we're running good programs, means, you know, kids are in, invested and engaged in. In our learning from, our programming here, um, but this, we're not dealing with district, believe me. This has put a wrench in a lot of things.
Public finance is gonna be a mess for the next three, five years.
I know, I'm thinking, gosh, I'm a seven years retirement.
All right, so Noel has said that he would agree to Don's proposal, and I would agree to it, you, Russ?
I think it's a good idea.
And Mary?
Me too.
Nellie, okay, is that consensus enough for you?
Yes.
Great.
It's enough to get me started on the preliminary financials that I got presented them. If everybody wants to just take a quick peek at this little sheet here, this is justification to all. Our fund balance increased, I'll just quickly go through that for Noel and Ellie, and I think Mary, you were in a part of it. Um, I kind of explained it to them, but this is the legend of how our fund balance increased this nineteen twenty. Um, I budgeted for a thousand thirty-three A P U's, which is adjusted pupil units, we actually ended the year at a thousand forty-one point nine two. So that gave us a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars more in revenue, and then our special ed revenue increased. Um, it, it is insane, but it increased a hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars, and those are, those are. Adjustments from two thousand seventeen, eighteen, there's nothing I can forecast for that, you just don't know. Special, and the auditors will talk about that a little bit.
They will, huh, because, what will they say?
They're gonna say the same thing, that I can't, you just can't, we can't forecast for things that we should've had two years ago. Um, transportation charge backs, now what this means, um, is I charge back activities. Because I, the state says we have to. All the, all the mileage and all the wages that are, we pay our bus drivers automatically default into a transportation code. I go back and I charge those activities for that transportation, cause that's where it should go. So we saved sixty-seven thousand dollars on that, um, the special ed transportation costs obviously went down, um, because we weren't transporting. Um. Utilities dropped, bus fuel obviously dropped, spring activities, salary and supplies dropped. And, um, I had to move our bus purchase into operating capital, I had it into capital, but. Our auditor strongly encouraged me to put it into operating capital because it will be depreciated.
Boy, that's true.
It will be, yeah, it is a ten-year cycle, so that, that comes up to where. Please, the number in green is what our fund balance increased over nineteen, or eighteen, nineteen to nineteen twenty, so that tells you, um. That the all those, um, amounts are justified.
I mean, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty.
Two thousand nineteen twenty to, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, year end to two thousand nineteen twenty, year end. So does, does it make sense?
Now, has special education paid you, paid into this funding now as mid-state and all those places caught up? With their buildings, have they been, have they paid, no?
Mid-state, we pay, we pay a lot to mid-state for shared services. Um, we are, um, I, I'm very, they're very accountable for the dollars that they're, that they are charging us now. I question, since I got here, I questioned every single item, but I think it's a lot better than when I first got here.
Good.
And so I just want you guys to see that, so we have justification, um, is there, is there any questions?
Yeah, I have one, um. Did you know, like, we were told that if we helped them build this thing in Little Falls, that we'd save thousands of dollars.
Yeah. We will save thousands of dollars on transportation, because we were transporting to Anemia for level four. That is the only place we're gonna save money, that building costs us about fifty grand a year, we don't levy for it. So at the end of the year, I get, I get a fifty thousand dollar bill for the, our portion of the building, and then, um. Our costs, shared services go up every year because there's salaries and benefits.
So we didn't save fifty thousand dollars worth of gas.
And if you saw the condition of that building, it would make your hair stand out.
Yeah, it was pretty ugly, um, we will, we will recoup. Our transportation costs, it'll take three to five years, but we will, we will recoup. We will, it's not an immediate gain, in, because we're always, we're always seeing an, uh. Growth on expense on this end because of salaries, the shared service salaries and benefits increased, um, but our transportation has gotten low. Because we don't drive to Anemia anymore.
Yeah, it's, it's a savings, it's not.
Right, it's not, you're not gonna, and it depends on how many level four, um, children we have in our.
Does it matter, does it matter how many we have or what we pay?
Sure.
Yeah, it does.
It does.
Yeah, because, I mean, we're still, we have to transport our own right now, cause mid-state doesn't, now they have a level four program, that's what. I think that's how they sold the building to everybody, is they're now housing their own level four, instead of us having to transport to a meeting back. So, I think it's a, I think it's a good sound plan, um. And I, we are meeting, even if it's ten minutes, we are meeting monthly for the finance committee, because this is very volatile time.
What do you think the biggest thing that the auditor's gonna be getting for us?
I have.
Separation?
That was the only, that was the only material finding we had this year, everything else, it was, it was, it was. I mean, we had a, yeah, we had a moment because it was a great audit.
Good, good, that's wonderful of you.
That was very good, thank you for the hard work.
I love how they always, they always like, well, you don't have enough separation, well, you need a small army of people to have the separation you need, you know?
Their issue with the separation in the business office or the district offices, the trail starts with me and ends with me, that's the problem. I sign on everything, I code everything, I, I, so I mean.
There's more than one school business manager sitting behind bars. I'm just saying that, you know, I, I know how it happens, I mean, it happens in every business, some, somebody gets ahold of something and.
I'm very diligent and very.
That's why we do the audits for them, so they should find that.
So I will tomorrow get ahold of K D B and say by consensus, this was agreed to. And it can, it has to, it has to pass by a majority vote on Monday, but we'll start to work.
But you're gonna have it all worded out and everything for us?
Of course.
Awesome.
It doesn't have to be the resolution, it just has to be by majority.
All right, is there anything else?
No, let's go home, oh.
Anything else?
I have a call.
There's a motion, there's a second?
Yes, I'll second.
It's been moved by Director Gerard, it's seconded by Director Garrett to adjourn the meeting, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all who oppose, all who abstain, meeting is adjourned five zero zero, good night.